Okay, welcome everybody to the council meeting for April 20, 2021. We're going to start off with our public hearing for the 2021 financial plan. So I will be in motion to move into the public hearing. So move by Councilor. Seconded by Councilwoman Mary Head. Be it resolved, the Council of Towne Niwa do not open this public hearing to present the 2021 financial plan. All in favor, hear it. Okay, Jamie, you're up.
Somebody hit the... You might want to move your chair.
I will.
Okay.
I want to sit here.
Tonight's presentation will start with an overview of completed and proposed projects. Assessment, then revenue and expenses, followed by utilities and an explanation of the impact on rate payers. I would like to thank everyone for attending the financial plan hearing under these trying circumstances and to let you know that there'll be a chance for questions following the presentation. The Town of Niwa's vision is to continue to grow into a diverse community that supports unlimited possibilities and opportunities, while providing essential services, a safe community, accountability, and engaging residents and businesses to invest in our community. The financial plan is the tool that the municipality uses to achieve some of these goals. In 2020, our completed projects were: the main components of the multi-use trail park, the solar panels at the swimming pool, the sand salt shed was completed at Public Works, water and sewer installs along with some drainage work on the CN property, and Phase 1 of lagoon upgrades were completed. This year's budget plans are: road construction, we have many projects in the works, reconfiguration of Commerce and Mountain Avenue, Davidson Street, and the CN property, to name a few. The fire department will be getting a set of JAWS, a dryer to dry the gear, thermal cameras, and the annual replacement of bunker suits. Construction of a new RCMP detachment adjacent to the fire hall will begin. Finishing the replacement of the old Christmas lights so that they are all new with LED lights. And we have applied for grants to help get some of the needed recreational upgrades. There is a basic formula for calculating taxes in the province of Manitoba. The formula has three parts: assessment, mill rate, and dollar levy requirements, or what is known as your tax levy. So assessment times your mill rate will give you your tax levy. Or, we can take the dollar levy that is required to maintain and improve services, divide by assessment equals your mill rate, which is how the municipality charges taxes. Assessment Services is the department responsible for the assessment of all real and personal property in the province, excluding the city of Winnipeg. In Manitoba, property is assessed at market value in accordance with the Municipal Assessment Act. Market value is the most probable selling price of the property. Regular reassessments ensure that property evaluations keep pace with real estate market conditions and that property taxes are fair. This happens every two years. The values are determined by the assessment branch and are based on market values, for the most part, with the exception of some types of commercial property which may be valued at different methods. Our assessment base is made up of 56% from residential properties, 34% from commercial properties, and 10% from exempt properties like churches and hospitals. In 2021, Niwa's total assessment increased by 0.51% from last year. So now one mill will raise $196,524.15. Our municipal rate for this year is 21.72 and has seen no change from 2020. The school's mill rate has changed from 11.26 to 11.154, or a decrease of 1%. The educational support levy, which does not apply to residential rate payers, has decreased to 8.809 mills. We have no control over these mill rates as they are set by the province of Manitoba and your local school boards. Of your property tax bill, 65% is municipal tax and 35% is school tax. Our budgeted municipal revenues for 2021 are around $14 million. The makeup of this revenue is 32.7 from property tax, 9.1 from conditional government transfers, 5.9% from unconditional government transfers, 13.6 for user fees and sale of goods, 36.5 from reserve transfer in, 1% from other income, and 1.2% from permits, licenses, and fines. This year, our total tax levy is seeing an increase of about $31,000, or approximately 0.46%. This includes school and municipal taxes. Our planned revenues, which take into account our rentals, fees, permits, licenses, fines, grants, and sales, will reflect an increase of about 61%, whereas our transfers from reserves will reflect a large increase. This is due to the fact that the RCMP building is going to be constructed out of reserves. Overall, this leaves the demand for taxes at a value of about $4.6 million, or a 0.80% increase from last year. This year's total budgeted expenditures are around $14 million, with 6.7% being general government services, which consist of office-elected officials, insurance, and grants; 6.5% is your protective services, which is your fire and police; 14.7%, which is your transportation services, which includes Public Works, equipment repairs, stone removal, streets, and airport; 3.8% environmental health, which is your garbage and recycling; 1.8, public health and welfare, which is your cemeteries and social assistance; 0.6% is your environmental development, which is your planning and weed control; 1.7% is your economic development; 4% is recreation and culture, which consists of your swimming pool, parks, campground, and library; 55.8% is your fiscal services, which is your capital and debentures; and 4.3% is your reserve appropriations. Expenditure changes from last year to this year are increases in general government, protective services, transportation, environmental development, and fiscal services and capital. Most are small increases to more accurately reflect costs, with the exception of environmental development services, as we have to mark all the pins for the CN property and capital as we are starting the RCMP build. Environmental health, public health and welfare, economic development, and recreation are seeing decreases to also reflect actual costs. In the past years, council has changed the approach they used in deciding what organizations would receive grants. They're following the same rules in regards to the over $153,000 worth of grants being issued. In addition to supporting very important and worthy organizations, council wanted to ensure equity and fairness for all taxpayers, even if they did not normally utilize the organizations and/or facilities receiving the grants. You will note in some instances, council is taking the position of creating partnerships in the form of exchange of services in order to expand the use of the facility or program on a broader basis. The primary goal is to increase exposure for the organizations and to create additional opportunities for those who may not otherwise access certain programs or services. Council has chosen a variety of recipients of grants for this year and are thrilled to support these great organizations. Letters will be sent following the passing of the budget to each of the recipients. This year's capital expenditures amount to around $7.5 million and are as follows: Fire department has JAWS, dryer, thermal cameras for about $54,000; turnout gear of $8,900; communication and gas monitoring monitor for $5,000; demo of the old fire hall for $75,000; and the RCMP building construction of $4.8 million. Office capital, furniture of $1,000; exterior of office, the sign, $5,000; and computer upgrades of $12,000. Niwa Pool, the recreation plan, for $308,000; solar panels at the pool for $10,000; soccer fields at the flat for $10,000; Public Works, boulevards and drains for $80,000; road construction for $2 million; Christmas lights for $13,000; multi-use trail development for $150,000; and parks for $5,000. This year, council will commit the following contributions to the reserves: $65,000 to fire, $15,000 to general, $75,000 to recreation and culture, $50,000 to healthcare and facility, and $150,000 to Public Works and environmental. We have also budgeted to transfer monies for some of these reserves to help reduce the burden on the taxpayer for 2021. Now, onto the utility operating budget. Revenues will equate to roughly $6 million. Our revenues make up: 37% from water bills, 1% from hydrant rentals, 39% from other revenue, and 23% from reserve transfer in. The utility expenditures make up as $6 million, with 15% from water treatment and supply, 4% from sewer collection and disposal, 74% in capital projects, 1% in reserve allocations, and 6% in debenture payments. Changes have been made to more accurately reflect costs, with a decrease in water and an increase in sewer as we now have the wastewater treatment plant operational. Reserve contributions have stayed the same and we are seeing an increase in capital that is mainly due to a lagoon upgrade being done in phases along with the reservoir being built. This year's capital purchases are mounting to around $4.5 million and are as follows: A reservoir for $4.5, with replacement in valves and hydrants of about $6,700. Phase 2 of our lagoon project is $5 million, which we are going to debenture for. Our utility water reserve is seeing a contribution of about $52,000, with a withdrawal for the reservoir. The utility reserve is seeing a contribution of $12,000. So what does this mean for the taxpayer in 2021? If you have assessed value of $300,000 in 2020 and your assessment hasn't changed in 2021, you will see no increase in the municipal tax levy as the mill rate has stayed the same at 21.72. I have added a few slides into this presentation to try and help you understand what the 2021 provincial budget changes to the educational property tax rebate will look like. In 2021, owners of residential and farm properties will receive a 25% rebate of the school division special levy payable. Residential properties include single-dwelling units, condos, and multiple-unit dwellings. The educational property tax rebate will be based on the school division special levy before the educational property tax credit advance. Farm property owners must still apply for their farmland school tax rebate, which is different from this. Based on residential example above, with an assessment of around $340,000, gross school taxes of $1,700 will see a rebate on your property taxes of $525 instead of the $700 you normally see, for a total owing of $1,175. The first-listed property owner on the tax notice will receive a rebate check a few weeks before taxes are due for the 25% of the gross school tax, or the $1,700. The check amount will be for $425. So for this example, in 2020, you would have received a $700 rebate on your property taxes. But for 2021, you're going to see only $525 on your tax bill and a rebate check for $425, which is your 25% of the $1,700, will be mailed out to you. Therefore, even though we have said that there is no mill rate increase, you will see your bill go up by $175. But that $175, along with the extra $250, will be sent to you as a rebate check that will go towards your taxes. So to sum this example up, last year you got a total rebate of $700 and this year you will get a rebate of $950 in the form of a check and as a credit on your property taxes. Other properties get a 10% rebate. For 2021, owners of other properties such as commercial, industrial, railway, institutional, pipeline, and designated recreational will receive a 10% rebate of the total of both the school division special levy and the educational support levy payable. So you will still see no rebate on your property taxes, but you will receive a check for $1,100, as in this example above, towards your tax bill. Gross provincial and school levy is $11,000. Times by your 10% gives you a $1,100 rebate check. Questions?
Okay, I gather we're ready for questions from the public, if they have any, is that correct? Okay. If anybody at the council table has any questions or comments? I guess my comment would be that education tax rebate, it's a little complicated, isn't it? It's hard to grasp, but right off the hop.
You shouldn't end up with more according to it, but you're not going to see it directly on your tax notice. You don't have to get it two different ways instead of one, as it was before.
And this is just the one year, I understand, right? Next year's budget is supposed to have it?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, that's the way it was explained to me, too. Okay, I guess we don't have any questions. Then I guess we will close the, this financial part of our meeting. So I need a motion to close it, move by Councilor Pudlo. Seconded by Councilwoman Lado. Be it resolved, the Council of Towne Niwa do not adjourn this public hearing at 6:20 PM. All in favor, hear it. Okay. Okay, we have a couple more public hearings to do, but before that, we're just going to go into our meeting and just approve, again, approve of the agenda.
Did you want to continue the meeting because it's not scheduled until seven?
Oh, sorry. Oh, okay, so we should stop our meeting.
Just in case somebody goes to come.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right. No, it's all right, yeah, we'll stop the meeting for now and you're at home. Yeah, we'll get back in at 7:00. Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're going to move forward with our regular meeting before we approve the agenda and then we're going to go into a couple of public hearings. So first of all, I need a motion to approve the agenda. I get moved by Deputy Mayor Italy. Seconded by Councilor Lado. Be it resolved, the Council of Towne Niwa approve the regular meeting agenda for April 20, 2021. All in favor, hear it. Okay, we're going to move into the first public hearing and I will need a motion to open that hearing. So move by Councilor Pudlo. Seconded by Councilor Coggin. Be it resolved, the Council of Towne Niwa do not adjourn this public hearing to hear representation variation application B-02-2021 of Dustin Osborne and Sheri Suskey. All in favor, hear it. Okay, Jeff, Jeff, I assume you're speaking to this?
Yes, yeah. So this is application B-02-2021-N. Owner and applicant is Dustin Emery Osborne and Sheri Ann Suskey. The proposal is variation to reduce the front yard setback from the required 15 feet to propose 10.47 feet for an existing building on Lot 1 and to reduce the front yard setback from the required 15 feet to propose 10.83 feet for the existing building on Lot 2. And the area affected is 30 Gil Drive, Lot 1, Lot 4, Plan 6965. Reason of support, this is to satisfy subdivision requirements to sever the existing parcel in three separate lots. So this is in parcel with subdivision application. These buildings that are being buried, they're existing buildings. Through these processes, we like to just make sure, you know, we take care of if there's some non-compliance in the current zoning file that we just permanently provide as a lot.
Okay, is there anybody here to speak to this in the audience, or? No? Okay. Is there any questions at the council table? There's basically nothing being changed, right, Jeff? It's just kind of...
No, existing buildings, nothing's been new proposed this time. Let me say, it's just essentially just made of non-compliance in compliance.
Right.
Going forward in the future.
Any objections or interest objections?
Uh, sorry, no, there's been nothing. The notice has been circulated to 100 meters of the property and I received no concern about it or against it, so.
Okay, if there's nothing else from the council table, nothing from the audience, then I guess we'll close this public hearing. So move by. Hear it, Councilor Pudlo. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Ed. Be it resolved, the Council of Towne Niwa do not adjourn this public hearing at 7:05 PM. All in favor, hear it. Okay, we're going to move into our second public hearing. So again, we will need a motion to open it. So move by. Councilor Pudlo. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Ed. Be it resolved, the Council of Towne Niwa do not adjourn this public hearing to hear representation of conditional use variation application CU-V-02-2021 of Stone Flit Builders Inc. All in favor, hear it.
Okay, Jeff, this is application CU-0221-2021-N. Owner of property, Lily Field Properties Inc., and the applicant is Dimitri Schiller for Stone Flit Builders. There's two parts to this application. The first is the variation, is to reduce the minimum rear yard setback from the required 30 feet to the proposed 18 feet and to reduce the overall parking requirements from a total of 128 required stalls to the proposed 88 stalls. Second part is conditional use, requested to allow for the location of a roomy house within the RM2 residential multi-unit zone. And it's affected area, the area affected is 35 Howden Avenue being Lot 65, Plan 65638. Reason of support is to facilitate construction of four two-story buildings which contain eight residential units to be used as roomy houses.
Did you have any objection or anything?
For this one, no, it's, Santan has been circulated 100 meter buffer around the property and I have received no, no communication or against it.
Hear it. Do you have anyone that wants to speak?
I believe we have the applicant Dimitri here.
If he wishes, might come up to meet you and sit at the chair here. Welcome.
Yeah, we, I mean, Jeff just explained what we're planning to do there. We believe it's a big hit.
Okay, I think the one concern we had when we had discussed it before was the parking. What was the final decision on that, Dimitri?
On a worse case, like Plan B, we would be able to have between the building C, that's sort of between the building B and C, there's green space. What we still could probably get another 22 parking spots in. So what we have coming, 110 parking. And...
Yeah, you want me to speak to it, Dimitri?
Yes, if you would help me.
You're not from the board?
Yeah, from the board, I'm Lyle Lowen, City Director, Hallmark. Yeah, we didn't, I wasn't able to, can I take my mask off?
Sure.
Yeah. I don't have to hear this all three times. Yeah, we, I tried to get the actual statistics of our TFWs, temporary foreign workers, as to what percentage of them actually had vehicles. So I wasn't able, we weren't able to get the exact stats because it's a bit of a moving target, but we know that our year one, ones that have been here for a year or less, it's well below the 50% mark. Of course, none of them come with a vehicle in the first place. And the purpose of, you know, of this housing is for the temporary foreign workers. And, you know, we bring it in as an example. This year, our budget is for 150 new temporary foreign workers for 2021. So our expectation is that less than half of those will actually require a parking space. So just to give a little bit of context to what we're trying to do there.
Okay, and how long would they normally spend in those units? They'd be there for just one year, two years?
Yeah, so if you think about it in terms, so we, as part of our arrangement or contract with them is we supply housing for one month.
Yes.
At our expense, and after that, they're on their own as we try to find that. So if we're working on, you know, I would say this year at 150 is, would be, we would be anywhere between 150 every year of new TFWs. The idea is we always need those housing apartments for the next new batch of TFWs coming in. So that we'd be turning it over, in other words.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah. The council, have any questions?
So amending it to, amending your areas to 110 wouldn't be a problem, then?
No, I think even the, I think even the original was 88. 88, I mean, we, we're totally comfortable even with the 88. I think the 88, it allowed us to actually have some green space in between, which would also be nice. I agree, space to become parking spots, I think, if we go up higher.
Is that correct?
What about the west edge of Freezer Corp?
Freezer Cold? Yeah, sorry, you said Freezer Corp. Freezer Corporation was so...
Oh, Schwanz.
Yeah, Old Schwanz, yeah. Sorry, you said the west side, is what you're saying?
Yeah. Well, my suggestion is it would be maybe more palatable to go to, instead of varying it down to 88, vary it down to 110 to 128. And is there a possibility of you using the west side of the Freezer Cold property as overflow parking?
Yeah, so we had, we had some conversation on that. I mean, as you'll be aware, there's, I mean, there's trucks in and out of there 24 hours a day. And, yeah, I mean, we would just be, we're just encroaching on that space of those semi-trucks coming and going. That's the only downside to it, to what you're talking about, so.
Like, I hate to give up the green space. I mean, that's really nice to have for everybody. And I don't know if this is possible. Is there some way you could write a agreement that, you know, if you say you're only going to need 50%, you know, you're only going to have 50% of the people to the vehicle. But if that turned out not to be the case, so then would there be something down the road where we could say, well, no, okay, now unfortunately you need to turn that green space into a parking lot? Is that something that could be done? I don't know.
Yeah, we'd certainly be open to that idea. Or even as you're suggesting, maybe the next step would be then, well, we need to find parking for them, so can they go on Freezer? Okay, Freezer Cold, or do we change green space into parking? And I agree in the green space, I mean, it'd be really nice. I mean, you just imagine the apartments like that.
No, I agree.
No, I agree, it'd be nice for you to keep that.
Okay, no, that's good information, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
Yeah. I just would like to maybe make a little bit of explanation on where the required parking comes from. In this case, as it's treated as a rooming house, the only body requires one stall, one parking stall per sleeping room. So that was, in a regular situation, if this was in a multi-use residential building, they would only require 1.5 stalls per unit, period. So we're looking at right now, required. If this same proposal came as a multi-unit building, they would only require 4 to 8 stalls for parking, just...
For all four buildings?
For all four buildings. If this was a, like, residential units, right?
So as a rooming house, what is, so then what would it be with the proposed...
Yeah, so as a rooming house, they need one parking stall per sleeping room. So they've got, what was it, 32 rooms, that four, my four buildings was 128 stalls. So just to give a little bit of, where that number was derived from, so.
Ask the board.
Yeah, I understand that, I guess the spirit of that when that was put together. I do know that we have regularly, as a council, amended some of the parking allowances that could be required by, well, even some of our latest developments that have come forward, we have worked with the developers. So I think if that's, speaking for myself, I think that's something that we can work with too. I mean, it's something we've done in the past for every other company. We've done multiple properties where we have done that and made those accommodations. So I would hope that council will do the same thing here as well.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, Councilor Lado?
Yeah, you know, definitely the 110 is a lot closer. I worry, I'm very concerned about what could happen in the future, too, you know, as the property could change over time. And we do see residents and sometimes, you know, they really enjoy their time and traveling around our beautiful country is a really good pastime, especially now with COVID. So we do see a lot of, a lot of people purchasing new vehicles and... But as much as we do have a lot of parks also, I would probably rather see more parking than less. So definitely, my two cents on it anyway.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. If there's something else, I guess we'll move forward and close this public hearing. So move by. Councilor Pado. Second by Councilor Kapanjala. Be it resolved, the Council of NiPawo do now adjourn this public hearing at 7:15 PM.